Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 7th at 6:30. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshi O'Farrell.
Here.
And Councilmember Trine, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please join us if you're able to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember O'Farrell, if you could provide the land acknowledgement, please.
Sure. We acknowledge that we were on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snaqami Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public comment. If I could have the list up here, that would be terrific. So just as a reminder, the public is welcome to attend City Council meetings in person, at City Hall, or virtually through Zoom, and you can provide up to three minutes of verbal public comment during the meeting. Okay, so I want to make sure that people know that whether it's general public comment or the public hearing comments, so the first I have up is Heather Murphy-Rains. For general comment.
Okay, good evening, Heather Murphy-Rains, 20 years resident of Samamish, and I'm honestly feeling gaslit about my own lived experience. It took me 28 minutes to drive from Trossix to the Gray Barn today at Sahali and 202 around 7:30 this morning, and yes, I took 202 because going through downtown Samamish would have taken even longer. There were no accidents, no construction, no school zones, no school buses, nothing unusual, just everyday gridlock. I can only imagine how much worse it is for people who commute daily to Microsoft, Amazon, or Boeing. Yet we keep hearing that this traffic is somehow the school's fault, that it's irresponsible parents or bad teenagers driving to school. That's just not fair. Many students drive because they have after-school jobs, clubs, or sports. Parents are simply doing their best to get their kids to school and themselves to work. What's even more frustrating, though, is the city and council are still relying on 2022 COVID-era traffic data to make planning and safety decisions. That data was collected when offices were closed, roads were nearly empty. Using it now in 2025 is not only outdated, it's a disservice to our community and frankly disingenuous. When you base studies and forecasts on pandemic traffic levels, you're pretending this gridlock does not exist, but every driver in Samamish knows the truth. Congestion is real, it's getting worse, and it's impacting our quality of life and our safety. I was lucky enough to work from home and could plan around travel, uh, traffic, but now with back-to-office mandates, hours of lives are spent sitting in cars instead of with families in our community. Life is short, and this daily gridlock is stealing that time from us. And don't even get me started on what this means in a medical emergency. Neighborhoods like mine in Trossix aren't getting standard service times. Now add 4K. If someone's grandma has a heart attack or a neighbor's house catches fire, first responders can't reach us in time. We are completely stuck with this 4K, and we are screwed, and that's unacceptable. Now add 4,000 new housing units coming to Town Center and a new high school on 228th, bringing in students from Issaquah. Combine that with thousands more commuters heading back to the office, and we're in serious trouble. God forbid there's ever a wildfire, an earthquake, or another emergency where we all have to evacuate. We need current, honest traffic data that reflects the real conditions we live with daily and leadership willing to act on it. Anything less is ignoring what every single driver already knows. Please represent Samamish and not a developer or your own political biases over residents' needs. How many of you today, besides Sid, because I know Sid's a good guy, walked to this meeting today, but you expect busy parents and children to do what you won't do? Live your values. Thank you.
Thank you. Gillian Wallace?
Dear city staff, the 360 Anonymous review is your golden ticket to an inclusive, kind, and accessible work culture. My name is Gillian Wallace, and I represent the Inglewood community. Silver servants, kinda hint at your passion and drive to build a better community. Start with your work community. What's broken or unclear? What needs help? Who promotes segregation or dehumanization? Who talks down at you? Who just doesn't listen to you? Use your voice, and Anonymous works just swing really, really big, right? We can finish cleansing our city of a rotten reputation with the full commitment to a true community within your workspace. You have the key to make Samamish the number-one city to work for. And to those of you who just feel tired and can't bring yourself to care anymore, I can help you with that, too. I know how to battle caregiver fatigue. It begins with honesty and viewing the person you are caring for as an individual, a human, a resident, a coworker, a dependent. When you let dishonesty rule the lazy, when you don't look deeper than the surface, you get situations like what happened in my community, a terrible worded announcement that does not value its target. We were being dehumanized and segregated. Small, underrepresented communities, and yet our Inglewood community is actually what our city residents and King County want you to replicate. Everybody wants to be in our community, right? And yet our Inglewood community is mostly sub-1,500-footage starter or retirement homes, the kind of community that houses sisters next door to each other, grandkids that can visit their family down the block. Communities talk, and they freely come to me to share their opinions. You give me a safe, accessible, and inclusive space to voice their words. Our neighboring communities are coming to me for representation. We know that even if the platform is provided, though, if we don't hold the space, the dishonest rot will take hold. City employees, educators, medical staff, and parents are most commonly cited as susceptible to career burnout or caregiver fatigue. You are nurturing our city as it evolves. You are nurturing our community as we grow it together. And again, I know how to battle that caregiver fatigue. We need to keep the same people who have worked so hard to learn all of this stuff here. We need to work together, but unfortunately, you guys have to come to me and my other community members because I don't have a bachelor's degree. Requiring the bachelor's degree on your city employment page is financially inequitable. I'm from the area before money came in, and a lot of us are. There is diligence in working to pay off my post-public education and starting my career without debt. I'm a solution finder, and I can guide you to success. Thank you.
Oh, you're fine. Mary Victor.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish for 25 years. I did send in an email, and I'm happy to say that Director David Pyle for Community Development did get back to me. I have two requests for your work plans, which is under New Business. The first one is on transfer of development rights, which I'll speak to because I need to say things about it. The second one, David said it is in the work plan, it's just not listed on one of the major projects, but that's for septic-to-sewer conversions and just for people to go, oh, I don't ever want sewer. Just some numbers, there are 2,200 septics in city-urban areas, there's 3,300 Samamish Plateau water, but some of that's unincorporated King County. The city of Samamish has about 17% of our parcels are on septic, where Bellevue, Redmond, and Issaquah are at 3% to 5%, so we're really way too high. Also, King County did a whole bunch of meetings in the last year because they were working on their code from 2007. The state updated their code from 2005, and mathematically, over 75% of the septics will fail in 10 years in King County, so there's 85,000 in King County, 65,000 of those are predicted to fail. When septics start failing, you get green, leaky, smelly algae, and other really bad things that are called effluent coming out. So anyway, so the septic stuff, it looks like it's going to start. They said, since I've researched it a lot, I've actually been asked to be the alternate person for King County OSS, for the Technical Advisory Committee for OSS. Those people are great to work with, and they listen to me a lot, so you don't have to. But anyway, so I'm glad that that will be starting up. The first one to talk about is, in 2019, I did a joint docket with Mary Johnson. It was accepted, it was on transfer of development rights. And it was approved, but it had to be delayed until after the 2024 comp plan, so that meant last year or this year. And we don't need transfer of development rights just from outside King County into the city, we need in-city, because what you're doing is you have all these little lots that are existing in the 1889 plat and in Tamarack and in other places, and people try to build a home on them, and the city staff will actually look at you and seriously tell you that those lots are unbuildable, and they are, but somebody who does a reasonable use exception, it comes in, and the people try to build, 10 years later, they're still trying to build, maybe there's been one, two, three, or four foreclosures, sometimes it takes 13 years to build them. They're usually built one at a time, sometimes they're in groups of two or four, but they basically wreck the entire environment, they take all the trees out, the stormwater's never put in, there is a foundation, so the city gets its stormwater fee, but nothing else. And in-city TDRs are actually in the code currently, there's just a few changes, like 1889 Inglewood and Tamarack, we're just outside the area where you could do those transfers. So I really think something small could get done to make sure it's in the code so that some of these really desperately do-not-build-on lots could go into Town Center and do something useful there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is all I have for the general comment. Was there anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? Are you on the other one?
I guess so.
It's totally fine.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. My name is Judith Kaiser, and I am here on behalf of the Community and Cultural Collective. Our mission is to serve as a catalyst for the arts, culture, economic development, and community life for Samamish residents of all ages by facilitating venues, programs, and activities that allow our community to connect, learn, and thrive. The city has budgeted $300,000 for feasibility studies on the 120 Building. A community center can mean many different things to different people, and as I understand it, many of you are in favor of having a community center. But we would like to know what your thoughts on this are exactly. We're hoping that the city leadership, C-3, and Samamish residents can come together to shape the vision of the 120 Building and see how we can serve as the heartbeat of Samamish both today as it stands and into the future. We would like to warmly invite you to join us this Friday, October 10th, that's 10:10 at 10:00 AM at the RE/MAX Alliance Office next to Mud Bay. We'd love to sit down with you, discuss the feasibility study, our letter of intent, and to explore together how the 120 Building can serve all ages and all corners of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that didn't get a chance to sign up?
I am Loreen Leo. I've lived here 29 years, and I have some questions for you tonight. One, why did you choose to use 2022 traffic data in the city's transportation master plan? That data is from an outlier, a COVID-low-traffic year. Why then did you also use that data in the final SEIS? Because you chose to use this data, any conclusion that you made in the final SEIS and in the transportation master plan regarding traffic is just highly questionable. You are using data that is an anomaly, an outlier. What are you doing now to remedy this and correct it? Two, two of our sitting, sitting council members who are also candidates for reelection have chosen to put their campaign signs on Town Center land that is owned by someone who wants to develop their land. I don't begrudge the property owner his desire to develop his land. What I'm questioning here is whether it is a good look for our city for candidates to put their campaign signs knowingly on a developer's land. Wouldn't it be a much better look for our city if candidates kept their signs knowingly off developer lands? And better yet, wouldn't it even be grand for our city if candidates no longer took campaign donations from developers, no matter how they're funneled, even if they're funneled through political parties? And three, last night at the candidate debate, we heard a great deal about our budget problems along with the fact that the City Council has reduced the city budget, and thank you for those reductions. But with those reductions comes some questions, because we also heard that the expenses being spent are still exceeding, they're exceeding every year, meaning that maybe our reductions aren't reductions after all. And so I just have some dissonance here, and you can sort it out for us. All you need to do is, in your next city newsletter, just show us what the total expenses have been for the last five years, year by year, and what they're projected to be year by year for the next two years. That would really help us residents. Anyway, thank you.
And is there anyone else? Take your pick.
I just have a quick comment, I promise I'll be, I'll be fast. My name's Jack Chambers, I've been living here for 21 years. I'm mainly here for the bike ped plant because I'm super, super excited about that. I looked over it, and it looks so awesome. There are so many just smash-hit projects in there that I'm really excited to see, and I know that the, the number of protected bike lanes that we have in there right now are really freaking expensive, and that that's going to be the first thing that gets cut because we can convert to just like a regular bike lane really easily. And I just, as a resident, I want to feel like a king on the bike lanes, and some of the bike lanes in Samamish do not make me feel like kings very much, they make me feel like vermin. So I would love if we just keep those protected bike lanes in, that's all I'm asking. Love what we're doing so far. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. And there was one last person, I think.
Good afternoon, City Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor Lamb and Mayor Howe, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Six years ago, I spoke to the council about my concern for our deer and our wildlife. Our city's wildlife has always held a truly special place in my heart. It has likely touched all of our lives at some point or another. Perhaps you have had a recent deer encounter, and you took a few minutes out of your busy, busy schedules to stop and admire. You've likely seen bunnies eating your produce, but they were too cute for you to care. You've probably been startled by a few frogs and snakes on your walks in local neighborhoods. I bet you've heard the owls hooting and the coyotes howling at night, and you wondered what time you'd finally be able to sleep again. Maybe you've been mesmerized by the diverse calls of birds in the area, or maybe you haven't had the time to listen. Today, I'm here to encourage you to listen. The truth is that everything we do has an impact on our wildlife. We share Samamish with so much more life than we imagine, and regardless of what we do, preserving it is how we keep this place magical. I understand it may feel foolish to bring up our wildlife friends in a time where so many issues impact humans, but today, all I ask is that we care and include wildlife in our plans, goals, and decisions. This can include considering wildlife corridors and wildlife crossings, or simply encouraging our residents to care. All I hope is that we will care. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, and now we'll move to online.
Those who have pre-registered to give online comment and would like to comment at this time, please raise your hand. Mr. Stickney, your, your public comment time is open.
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stickney here. First, Mariner score update, eight to three, starting the bottom of the ninth. We'll see how it shakes out. Some information on traffic. Planning Commissioner Sead Safavian showed me, or told me about something that I went and got a copy of, and I think it would be very interesting to inform this, you know, these, you know, traffic discussions. On the city's website, there's a map, and I'm going to read its title, 2015 through 2024 ADT map, average daily traffic. Very interesting to look at all of the year-to-year change in traffic. Important. Also, something else I've heard quite a bit about, and I will admit that I don't have it precisely in my head, but I do think it's a fair question to ask, when were traffic counts used that were in the SEIS? And I may be wrong, but I think the transportation master plan might have been 2022, but I think maybe the SEIS was 2023? And then a last thing, at the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, there were a couple slides at the start of the presentation where city staff is going to be taking a deep dive into transportation issues, a north star for directing Town Center and getting it all right. And the statements were is that public work staff, consultants, and others are going to take a deep technical drive and bring this information back at the Planning Commission on November the 20th. So I would stay tuned for that. That's all I have today. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all for online public comment.
Very good, thank you very much for your help. We'll now move to see if there's a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And now we will go to presentations and proclamations. So for the first proclamation is Substance Abuse Prevention Month.
Who was the pitcher on the Mariners that allowed us to?
Oh, Paul, 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 dude. That moment of levity was brought to you by Paul Stickney. And now on with the proclamations about, well, potentially substance abuse prevention.
City of Samamish Proclamation, National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, on a continuum from experimental use to tragic fatal overdose, substance use by our youth is a complex reality. And while most of our youth do not use substances of abuse, for some, peer influences, social expectations, their genetics, and other risk factors conspire to create a profile that makes it difficult for them to escape. And whereas, substance use prevention efforts can hinder the negative impact that youth substance use has on the development and potential of our youth to succeed. And whereas, substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention by changing a child's early life path away from maladaptive solutions and towards positive behaviors and productivity. And whereas, substance use prevention is an extremely cost-effective model in comparison to later high utilization interventions. A cost-benefit analysis by the National Institute for Drug Abuse, NIDA, in October 2021 indicates a savings anywhere from $13 to $26 for every $1 spent on effective school-based programming. And whereas, the benefits of increasing protective factors while reducing risk factors and engaging social-emotional learning provides a universal benefit to all of our youth. And whereas, by stopping substance abuse use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in our community. Now and therefore, Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim October as National Substance Use Prevention Month and encourages all community members to join her in promoting healthy choices by youth and to take part in preventing substance use among young people.
Thank you. And here today, we have Marnie Maraldo, Executive Director of the Influence the Choice. She's here this evening to receive the proclamation. Founded in 2011, Influence the Choice is a community-based organization which focuses on preventing substance use among youth and promoting their mental health, physical, and social wellness.
And I'm actually going to have two of my members of our Teens Encouraging Community Health speak to you today, so first I'd like to welcome Mudra Machawad, and then Anvesha Jain will be coming up. And I'm going to have the other students stand behind that are part of tech.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mudra Machawad, and I'm a sophomore at Skyline High School. I want to thank you for recognizing Substance Use Prevention Month and for giving students like me the chance to share why this work is so important. For me, prevention isn't just about statistics, it's about real choices my peers and I face every day. In high school, it can feel tempting to just fit in, to deal with stress by going along with what others are doing, but through my involvement with tech and Influence the Choice, I've learned that the stronger path is staying grounded in our values, kindness, curiosity, and believing that positive brings the change. I've seen how powerful it is when students are given spaces to connect and lead, whether it's running a campaign at school, hosting workshops, or simply starting conversations with peers. Tech has shown me that prevention is about creating a culture where healthy choices feel possible and even empowering. On a personal level, I found my own outlets for coping with stress, like dancing, journaling, serving my community, or even hiking with friends. Those habits remind me that prevention isn't only about avoiding harm, it's also about filling your life with meaning, connection, and joy. I know there's still more work to do. New challenges come up every year, from raping to social pressures, but proclamations like this tell us that we're not alone. They show that our city is committed to walking alongside youth as we build a healthier future together. Before I close, I want to give a heartfelt Before I close, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to Mayor Howe and the council for your support, and to Marnie Maraldo from Influence the Choice for guiding and empowering students like me. Your encouragement reminds us that youth voices matter, and together, we can keep building a healthier and stronger Samamish. On a final note, the heart to serve, the call to lead, and the courage to engage equals to service leadership. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Howe, Deputy Mayor Lam, and Council members. My name is Anvesha Jain, and I'm a senior at Skyline High School and the Chair of Teens Encouraging Community Health. I would like to begin by thanking Samamish City Council for their support of Influence the Choice's work through the Human Services Grants. Your support allows us to reach communities within Samamish with critical information on substance use prevention. Moreover, thank you to everybody here tonight. Your presence demonstrates something powerful, that our community recognizes substance abuse prevention as a cause worth standing behind, worth talking about, and worth acting upon. When we discuss prevention and recovery, we often hear phrases like "just say no" or "stay clean," words that can make sobriety sound simple. These platitudes are easier said than done. The reality is that abstinence from substances can represent one of the most challenging journeys a person can undertake. It requires courage, strength, and ongoing support every single day. Through tech, Teens Encouraging Community Health, I've had the opportunity to hear the experiences of students all over the district who have struggled with substance abuse. Frequently, they relate how abstinence didn't even seem like an option, as they were trapped in a distorted bubble where they were convinced substances were the only way to enjoy themselves, like everybody else around them was partaking in that. Unfortunately, a persistent stigma that still surrounds the topic of substance abuse prevents this bubble from being burst. Too often, society can perceive those struggling with saying no to substances as weak, rather than as individuals facing a difficult challenge who deserve compassion and support. It's easy to undermine the gravitas of this issue until you're the one being pressured to take just one sip with what feels like the weight of a million judgments from others resting on you. Substance abuse continues to be treated as a topic to whisper about in secrecy by many people, rather than addressed openly and honestly. This is precisely why proclamations like the one on our agenda today matter so deeply. By recognizing October as Substance Use Prevention Month, we shine a light on an issue that has remained in the shadows for too long. We take a collective stand against stigma. We send a clear message: We don't turn away from those who are struggling, we reach towards them. We don't judge, we support. I hope that this month can be a catalyst for continued conversation, compassion, and action. Thank you for your time, and I hope all of you have a wonderful evening.
We have a second proclamation, which is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we do have Elba... I was going to pronounce this wrong. Moreira, Director of Programs for Domestic Abuse Women's Network, also known as DON, here this evening to receive the proclamation. DON is a full-service domestic violence agency that has been supporting, empowering, and sheltering survivors of domestic abuse since 1980. Staff work on the front lines, providing essential services... I was going to say existential services. I think I'm still right. ...from a form, a support line, and shelter, and advocacy, helping survivors rebuild their lives. Deputy Mayor Lam.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas domestic violence affects millions of individuals across all communities, regardless of age, gender, socioeconomic status, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas, one in three women and one in four men have experienced physical violence by a partner, and one in three teens has experienced some form of abuse in a relationship. And whereas, the theme for Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2025, With Survivors Always, affirms our commitment to stand with survivors throughout their journeys of healing, empowerment, and justice. And whereas, it's crucial to support local and national organizations that provide lifesaving services, counseling, advocacy, and education to empower survivors and work toward ending domestic violence. And whereas, the City of Samamish stands in solidarity with survivors of domestic violence and their families, and affirms our commitment to creating a future where everyone can live free from fear and violence. Now therefore, Karen Howe, Mayor of City of Samamish, on behalf of the City Council, hereby do proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Samamish, and urge all residents to support survivors, raise awareness, and advocate for lasting change.
Yes, it's the whole awkward picture thing right now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and community members. My name is Elba Moreira. I am honored to be here today on behalf of DON, Domestic Abuse Women's Network. First, thank you for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and for taking the time to shine a light on an issue that too often remains behind closed doors. Every October, we come together to raise awareness, but for survivors, the need for safety, support, and healing continues long after this month ends. Each night, women, children, and families find refuge at DON's shelter because of ongoing support. Behind every number, there is a real person, and a mother who can finally sleep without fear, a child who begins to laugh again, and a survivor who takes their first steps towards a life free of violence. Your partnership truly changes lives, but awareness alone isn't enough. It takes consistent investment of funding, time, and compassion to ensure that DON can continue to answer every call for help every single day of the year. On behalf of DON and the countless survivors who have found hope and safety through your support, thank you for standing with us. Together, we are building a community where safety, dignity, and hope are possible for everyone. We answer over 400 calls each month, and we want to continue to be there for survivors. Because of your support, this year, we have been able to help about 1,500 people just at the end of September. This month, we invite everybody to visit our website and follow Sierra's journey each week. This is an interactive experience that brings to life the difficult choices survivors must face that impact their support, their life. You will also find other ways to get involved with us at dorising.org. Another way to celebrate survivors is to attend the Art Against Silence Survivor Art Show featuring art from our clients this Sunday in Renton. Again, our website is a great place to find more information about it. Thank you so much, and we are very honored to receive this. And now I'm ready for the picture.
Okay. You're in better shape than the rest of us. Okay, we are now moving into public hearings. So we will be doing a public hearing on the Bike and Pedestrian Mobility Plan. So we have Audrey, Andrew, and do we have Wintana? Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. My name is Audrey Starsee. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Samamish. I am joined in person to my right this evening by our Senior Transportation Planner, Andrew Spiliotis, and online by Lindsay Channing, our Transportation Planner, who has been the Project Manager for the Bike and Pedestrian Mobility Plan, as well as Wintana Miller, our Principal in Charge for the Project for the Consultant Team, DKS. I'm very excited to present to you the draft plan tonight. We look forward to hearing your feedback along with the communities. We do have a brief presentation, and then we'll ask you to open the public hearing. Thank you. So I'll get things going the first few slides, and then we will... We do have some speakers throughout the rest of this slide deck, but just as a reminder, this is a first for the city. We're really excited about this plan. This will be incorporated into the 25/2026 Transportation Master Plan update that is currently just getting going. So this will be included as a full appendices. Many of the policies in this document will be incorporated into both that, as well as the rideaway code update and public work standards that we're also working on. Many of the projects listed in this, you'll find in our future year capital project list. So this is a really important plan for the city. Like I said, we're excited to present it to you. So objective of this plan, you can find this was actually noted in our Transportation Master Plan that was adopted in 2024. We needed something, a plan that really focused on some of our multimodal efforts. We have a transit plan. We needed a plan that really focused on pedestrian and bicycle movements throughout the city and how we can improve mobility to create a more safe and connected community that is efficient for both walking, rolling, and riding throughout the city. Some of our goals were to create a framework for evaluating these types of projects. They are a little bit different than some of the larger projects that we do work on. And we'd like to also wanted to be able to provide a list of prioritized projects. We have a long list. The plan focuses on the top 10. Those, again, will be added to the future capital plan lists. And of course, we identified some gap areas in our policies, specifically around e-bikes and crosswalks. Next slide, please. So we're right almost at the end, so it's been an exciting process. We've really appreciated the participation from the community throughout the process. You'll hear a little bit more about that later on, and that's reflected in one of the chapters, Chapter Four of the plan. But we're really excited to be able to present the final plan in just a few weeks. This will come back to council October 21st. With that, I'm going to ask Lindsay to present policy recommendations.
Great, great. Thank you, Audrey. Good evening, Council and Mayor Howe. I'm Lindsay Channing, Transportation Planner and Project Manager for this effort. So I'd like to start with our policy recommendations. So this is an image that you have seen previously when we came to you and gave an overview, an intro to the work that we'd been doing on the Bike and Pedestrian Plan in July. This has also been shared widely with our... through our community workshop efforts and with various commissions that we met with in the spring heading into early summer. I'll briefly go over this and the pedestrian one on the next slide, but this one is in regards to bike facilities. And so what you're seeing here is an outline of recommendations for different types of facilities that would help us achieve our various LTS levels of service. If you remember, through the Bike and... or, excuse me, through the Transportation Master Plan, council did set a goal of an LTS 2 and LTS 3, depending on the type of arterial roadway that we have. So for principal and collector, it was an LTS 2, and a minor, it's a goal of LTS 3. So these are color-coded. The orange-red color is in regards to principal arterials, the green is for minor arterials, and the blue is for the collector arterials. And you'll see throughout, depending on the speed of the existing... the existing speed of the roadway and the average daily travel numbers, and taking into consideration the number of travel lanes in each direction, there are different recommendations to meet various LTS. So for example, on a minor arterial at a speed of greater than 35 miles per hour with more than 3,000 average daily trips, one lane each direction, to reach an LTS 2, the recommendation would be to provide a separated bicycle lane. Next slide, please. So this is very similar for the pedestrian facilities. Again, the colors correlate the same across principal, minor, and collector. For example, for a collector roadway that a speed limit of 25 miles per hour with an average daily travel of 0 to 3,000 vehicles trips and one lane each direction, to reach an LTS 2, we would need a minimum of a two-foot striped shoulder. There are lots of options on how to reach LTS 2, and some of the best ways to be able to determine that is to look at how our existing code and what it allows. So this allows some flexibility as we're looking at code if we make modifications to either go up or down on buffer and sidewalk widths. Next slide, please. This plan is also providing us some crosswalk policy recommendations. We'll be using these recommendations as we move forward with our future crosswalk study that we plan on undertaking next, as well as implementing that through our upcoming Public Works Road Standards and Rideaway Code Update Project and our TMP update that's coming in 2026 as well. And some of the things recognized here is that we want to look at... that there are marked crosswalks on all legs of signalized intersections, that we look at prioritized locations, so locations that have a higher pedestrian volume. Also, consider that where roadways for pedestrian bicycle facilities are not provided, could we propose alternate routes that would meet ADA standards, for example? Also, we would want to... we're going to be looking at crosswalk spacing, and there's a recommendation down here, depending on the area of study for these crosswalks, what the distance between crossings should look like. Next slide, please. Another policy recommendation endeavor that we undertook was looking at e-bikes and e-scooters. So this table is also very similar to one that you saw back in July. Our consultant looked at existing city policies and then looked at RCW, and then made recommendations on improvements as to where these various electric and non-electric bicycles should be allowed. So everything in green illustrates that it's in our existing city policy as it stands today. That's across like the PROS Plan, City Code, et cetera. Anything in purple is a recommendation that we modify, so either the highlighted purple sections or the text in purple as well. I will point out, because a lot of people don't know what the acronym stands for, the EPAMDs is Electric Personal Assistive Mobility Devices. So these are devices that are like that one-wheeled balance board that's elect... that has a motor, or segways, for example. They're two-wheeled, but they're a balancing mobility device as well. I also would note, while it's not on this table, because it is a completely different electric vehicle, if you will, is the electric motorcycles. Our police department did come and speak with council, I believe, in July about how those are currently being addressed throughout the city. They're not currently allowed anywhere within city limits. And a website has been put together and available on the city's website, addressing electric motorcycles and giving more guidance and references to the appropriate RCWs as well. Next slide, please. From there, I'd like to move on to our recommended projects. From there, I'd like to move on to our recommended projects. So throughout our draft plan, we were working to do analysis of existing conditions, future conditions leading up to 2044, coming up with different types of priority criteria that we could evaluate to help put together a priority project list or recommended recommendations of various pedestrian bicycle projects that we could eventually implement throughout the city. So our consultant team, with our input, utilized GIS to help with this endeavor. So the map that you're seeing on this slide is a raster image map of the GIS data. And that criteria for GIS analysis included looking at bike and pedestrian facility gaps, the level of traffic stress of each, the current level of service. For bicycle and pedestrian facilities, their proximities to schools, commercial areas, and transit stops, non-motorized crash densities throughout the priority network and slope. I will note that for our top 10 projects, the project scope was to look at the priority network, which was also set through our Transportation Master Plan when it was adopted in December of 2024. So on that previous map, you'll see that the green areas are areas where it's a lower need. Now, that doesn't mean that today it exists and is functioning, but projects from our adopted 252030 tip are incorporated into this analysis. And therefore, those projects, because they've already been identified and have a... at least some level of a plan to move them forward, are assumed to be a lower risk because we've already identified them as a need. Next slide, please. So with these top 10 projects, what does that mean? First of all, these top 10 projects are ranked just on the criteria I just went over. So that doesn't mean that these are the top 10 projects that we will work through as soon as and if this plan is adopted. The next step, once the Bike and Pedestrian Plan is adopted, is to take a look at all of the projects that were scored through this plan and score them against the criteria for being added to our Capital Improvement Plan for Transportation in the next cycle, which we evaluate on an annual basis. So because of timing, these ones will be evaluated next year and be considered for the 2027-2032 Capital Improvement Transportation Six-Year Plan. If they don't rise to the need on the six-year plan, then they will also be considered to either be added to our 20-year unconstrained list, which exists in our Transportation Master Plan. And through the Transportation Master Plan update process that we're undertaking the end of this year into 2026, we're also proposing to create a 12-year constrained project list. And constrained means funding and costing considered against those projects. And they would potentially be considered for that 12-year list as well, so that we have a complete concept of projects getting from all the way out at 20 years, where we're not sure exactly when we need to address them or how we'll be able to fund them, and then narrowing them all the way down to our six-year capital plan. And then lastly, the cost estimates that are associated with the projects we're going to be walking through this evening are a very conservative, high-level estimate. Once these projects are reevaluated and placed on either the six or the 12-year list, estimates will be relooked at and then again refined once we get to the actual project planning and implementation stages. Next slide, please. All right. I also would like to point out, before I get into this one, that all of the top 10 projects that can affect the level of traffic stress for bikes or pedestrians are designed to take them from either a four or a three to a Level 2 for bike and pedestrian level of traffic stress. So this first project is proposing both bike and pedestrian improvements. It would start at the north end of 228 there, by just at the bottom of Discovery Elementary, and continue south down to Southeast 40th Street, past Pine Lake Shopping Center. So this is along a main arterial. It passes a park-and-ride facility. It would provide access to, like I said, the Pine Lake Shopping Center, connection to Discovery Elementary, and also Pine Lake Middle School. And terminating at that Southeast 40th Street is the entrance to the Samamish Highlands Development. Next slide, please. The second project on our list is along that same area of the corridor on 228, from Southeast 30th to 224th. This, again, would be providing bike and pedestrian improvements. It's right there along the South Park-and-Ride at Southeast 30th and 228th Street. This also complements nicely with an existing project we have on our current Transportation/Capital Improvement Plan, which is TR 51, which is intended to fill gaps of gravel sections in between sidewalk connections. Next slide, please. Project number three is located at Louis Thompson Road and 212th Avenue. This, again, is both a bike and pedestrian project. It complements the work that is just about completed with Louis Thompson Road that has been going on all spring and summer. And the intent of this project is to help fill gaps along 212th. Next slide, please. Project number four is along Inglewood Hill Road. This section of Inglewood Hill Road has... is proposing to also provide bike and pedestrian project facilities along a few blocks of the roadway. And it will connect with another existing tip project, which is TR 108 for gap improvements. Next slide, please. Project five is moving to the east side of 228 in the northern area of Samamish there above, and connected to the Inglewood Shopping Center. So this would go from 228th on Northeast 8th Street all the way over to 244th Avenue. Again, there are many sidewalk and bicycle lane gaps along this stretch of a main of an arterial where there is potential to provide better access to various schools, including Inglewood Middle School, which is northeast 8th Street, and also has the potential to provide better access using side streets to get down to Eastlake High School as well. Next slide, please. This is more of a unique project. It's not the traditional bike and pedestrian facilities-type project that you've seen so far this evening. This one is along Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. And while we can't affect the pedestrian or bicycle level of traffic stress because that is only calculated on an existing roadway, we believe that this is a very important project that will provide better access to a very important and existing shared path network that we have in the city, which is the Eastlake-Samamish Trail. So this project would provide various crossing points to allow access to the Eastlake-Samamish Trail and provide signage to help people navigate to those access points as well. Next slide, please. Projects number seven and eight are right in line with each other. So Project Seven is Segment 1. This one is also located on 212th Avenue Southeast and goes from Southeast 20th up to approximately Southeast 13th Street or Ebright Creek Park. This will be coordinated with an existing flood mitigation project that we have on our current tip as well for the Ebright Creek area, so that as that area is being looked at and how to manage the need in that area, we could also consider how we can provide better pedestrian and bicycle facilities along this stretch of 212th. Next slide, please. Again, this is a continuation from Project Seven. So this starts at Ebright Creek and continues north up to Southeast 8th, providing additional bike and pedestrian facilities for connection throughout this corridor. Next slide, please. Project nine, this one is along 228th Avenue, and this is highlighting our... excuse me, our existing shared-use path that exists on the east side of 228th. This one is to provide wayfinding signage and striping improvements to that shared-use path to help the public utilizing that path understand the best way to use it for all users and to improve the visibility that it exists and how people can cross safely on 228th to access that shared pathway. Additionally, this pathway traverses through basically central part of our city on 228th, and we cross many schools. You'll see on here that we've got Discovery Elementary at the south, Skyline High School, Eastside Catholic. And then up at the north, we have Eastlake High School as well, not to mention other public facilities such as the library, City Hall campus, access to the commons, and various church and other community businesses. Next slide, please. And our last project is along 228th. And this one ties in with Project 1, which, if you remember, ended at Southeast 40th Street on 228th. And also Project 9, which is alerting people as to how they can better use the shared-use path along 228th Street to continue out this corridor. So it would go from Southeast 40th south to city limits, where it would connect with the improvements that the City of Isaguah has made at our southern border along the road network there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to address school access.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Andrew Spiliotis, a Senior Transportation Planner with the city. This evening, I'll be talking about... This evening, I'll be talking about the school access analysis we updated y'all on in July. Back then, we covered the approach we were going to use to identify school access projects. This evening, I'll briefly remind what we described in that approach and then talk through our top five projects we identified out of roughly 19 projects. So going back to the approach we utilized, we did a half-mile buffer around all the public schools within the city. We found anything beyond half a mile would have encompassed the entire city. Lindsay spoke to projects on our collectors and arterials. We realized there are needs off of those roadways, so we focused on local roads as part of this analysis. And so looking at those roads, we also looked to where do we have existing sidewalks? Where are there gaps in that, in the bike facilities? And then where can we get additional benefits, such as also providing access to parks to transit along Metro's Route 269 and to our commercial areas as well? So we identified roughly 19 projects. They're all in the map in the plan. And then we costed out the top five projects that were the highest scoring out of all 19 being evaluated and scored using the tip criteria for sidewalk and bike projects. So the next two slides go into those top five projects. With the first slide, the first two bolded both happen to be in the southern part of the city. Project 1 is a bike lane project, which would be restriping the existing wide shoulders on Audubon Park Drive. And the benefits of that project would be the northern part of that neighborhood, which is zoned to Discovery Elementary, would have bike access to the north. And then the southern part of the neighborhood is zoned to Sunny Hills Elementary School, and it would have access to the south. You're also close to a few parks, like Pine Lake Park, Commercial Area, and the bus route as well. The next project, number two on this slide, is a sidewalk gap project. And it is on a series of three roads over in the Pine Lake Park vicinity, Southeast 26th Street, 226th Avenue Southeast, and Southeast 29th Street. And similar to the project before, it would... it scored highly using the tip criteria, given you're right by Pine Lake Park, the bus route, the commercial area. And then it would allow students within the walk shed of Pine Lake Middle School to be able to walk to school. The next slide covers the remaining projects three through five, which are more in the northern part of the city. Project three is two different roads in the vicinity of Samantha Smith Elementary School. The first would be a block on 229th Avenue Northeast between the neighborhood park of Cimarron Park to Northeast 14th. And the second part of the project is along 230th Avenue Northeast from 14th Street south to Northeast 12th. And again, this is filling in gaps in the neighborhood where there's existing sidewalks around it, filling in those gaps. And it also scored highly, given not, you know, just the access to the school, but you're right near that neighborhood park and the bus route as well. Next up, Project 4 is along... it's a sidewalk gap project along Northeast 17th and Northeast 18th Place. Those roads together kind of function as a neighborhood collector road in that area and are directly across from Margaret Mead Elementary School. So this project would add sidewalks on a road that gets a good amount of traffic, where there's existing gaps. And it would also give access to East Samamish Park as well. And then the last project, number five, is a little bit different from the ones we've had before. It's what we would call a connector project because it's not only adding sidewalks, but it's adding local streets where there's some really small gaps in the network. That is over at the intersection of Northeast 14th Street and 236th Avenue Northeast. So it would fill in that intersection in two different places. It would add a connection for Northeast 14th between... oh, no, for Northeast... or, there's a lot of roads in there, bear with me. It would add 236th Avenue Northeast between Northeast 14th and Northeast 15th to fill in the northern leg of that intersection. And then for the eastern leg, it would extend Northeast 14th, where it currently terminates at 236th Avenue Northeast, extend it to the east to where there's a currently a stop near 239th Avenue Northeast. It's also depicted in the map in the report, for those very interested. So that... those are the top five projects. Again, we have all 19 in the map in the report. And similar to what Lindsay was saying, all of those will be considered as part of the TNP update and future tip updates in the university projects. With that, I will turn it back to Lindsay to talk about schedule, accomplishments, and next steps.
Thanks, Andrew. Next slide, please. So this is a graphic that you all have seen many times across various projects, but we think that it's really illustrative of how we got to where we are today. So this shows that we kicked off the project back in December of 2024, early January of 2025. The yellow stars indicate when we held community workshops. So those were held in February and in July of 2025, and then where we hit various milestones. So this evening, we're there with the yellow outlined bubble for the opening of the public hearing this evening with the goal of reaching adoption here at the end of October. Next slide, please. For those that like things a little more in more of a table format, this is just illustrating the various dates of when we went and gave presentations to various organizations. So as I had mentioned previously, we have given various updates and presentations to the Planning Commission, the Sustainability Commission, the Parks Commission. We came to council in July. We held... We came to council in July. We held the two community workshops, the one back in February, and then the one on July 16th. And then we're here this evening to conduct the public hearing, which we anticipate that being continued to the October 21st council meeting for your consideration of adoption as well. The QR code on this page will take you to the project website, and any comments can be provided. To myself, my email is on this page, but it is also located on the project website for easy access, so folks can get those comments into us. Next slide, please. And lastly, we'd like to end with what our accomplishments have been and what's next after we complete the bike and pedestrian plan. Next slide, please. So this plan is really helping to establish facility types for meeting various comfort level standards for our pedestrian and bicycle network. It's created, it has created the framework for evaluating bike and pedestrian projects and how we can then move them on to our various plans for further consideration and then to fruition. And then it also has provided a top 10 potential project list along with those five school zone, safety zone projects that Andrew just went over as well. As we've stated before, all of those various projects will be considered and put on one of the three different project lists or plans that we will be operating under, whether that's the 2027-2032 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, that what we hope to be creating through the TMP update, a newly created 12-year constrained project list, or the existing and updated 20-year unconstrained project list in the TMP. And then lastly, it's helping us create policies around complete streets, bike and pedestrian facilities, e-bikes and crosswalks, which although may not be fully implementable through this plan, this plan helps inform our next work efforts, which I'll be going over here on the next slide, please. So you'll see on this graphic, we're coming to the end of the bike and pedestrian mobility plan, but this plan will be used heavily to help inform updates through our 2026 TMP update process. Staff is also getting started on the right-of-way code and 2026 Public Standards Update, where a lot of the different recommendations, policy recommendations will be considered and then implemented through suggested code updates as well as not on this list, but the crosswalk study that I had mentioned earlier this evening, that is something that we will be getting started, started on in the fourth quarter of this year, so that's fast approaching as well for a work effort for Andrew and myself. Other plans, this is helping to inform, this is called, it's the Holly Corridor Study and Plan, our impact fee update, the Citywide CIP, which is currently underway for the 26th, 2031 cycle, so any projects from the bike and mobility plan will be considered there on that 27-32 CIP that you see will be getting about quarter two, quarter three of 2026. And with that, that concludes our presentation this evening. Staff asks that you open and conduct the public hearing, and we're happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you for the presentation. And Council, do you have any clarifying questions you'd like to ask at this time?
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I submitted some questions, and I won't go over all of those, but one that I did want to go back to just out of curiosity is why do we treat e-scooters differently from e-bikes? So if you go back to the little chart there, and I just, I'm just curious because I know when traveling, we've used, you know, the, the e-scooters to get from, you know, transit to a final destination. So like in, in the first one on sidewalks, like if I can have an e-bike, a Class 1 or 2 e-bike, why couldn't I have an e-scooter on the sidewalk?
I will start to address your question, and then anyone else can jump in to correct me or provide additional input, but the basis of these recommendations is based off of current RCW and how it's outlined in RCW. So that's part of why they're treated the way they are, because RCW has helped direct that. And then also, it's based on what we currently have had in our city policy as far as where those electric scooters slash bicycles are allowed. I think the places where you'll see there's a difference between Class 1 or 2 e-bike and the scooter is in sidewalks. And the other one is for roads with a speed limit greater than 25 miles per hour.
Yeah, and that also seems inconsistent, right? Like if we can't have an e-scooter on the sidewalk, presumably because, I don't know, it goes too fast or something, but we also can't have it on the road when it, so like the e-bike, the Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes can be on the sidewalks and on the roads greater than 25 miles an hour. So I'd just like us to take another look at that because I do think the e-scooters are a great way to get around. I think a lot of kids have e-scooters. And if e-scooters are trending like e-bikes, where there might be different classes, I think that's fine, but I don't know, I haven't seen the e-scooters go a whole lot faster than the Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, and they're also not as heavy. So like if they collided into a pedestrian, actually probably would be safer than an e-bike right on a sidewalk. So I would just like to know a little bit more about that. And then for the electric motorcycles, I'm curious that we would allow them on the roads when it's my understanding that they're really not legal or shouldn't be legal on the roadways. It says right here that roads under 25 miles an hour, they say yes, so.
Just as a point of clarification on this, electric motorcycles are not outlined on this table at all. They're not addressed.
Okay.
They're e-bikes only, which are different from the electric motorcycle.
Okay, so they're not legal anywhere, okay.
Yeah, my understanding is that electric motorcycles, which is a specific type, is not allowed anywhere in.
Gotcha, okay, perfect.
They would have to be licensed the similar way of like a gasoline motorcycle and have the mirrors, the pegs, and all of that and be registered. Then I did want to mention as well, building on what Lindsay was saying, we are going to continue to look into scooters and e-bikes as part of the Code and Standards Update.
Okay, because I, I'm not comfortable saying no to e-scooters if we're saying yes to e-bikes on the sidewalks, especially because along 228th, the only place you could, like you only have two choices, on the roadway, greater than 25 miles an hour, or along the sidewalk.
So part of what the table reflects is the existing RCW and the city's code, and so there's a RCW law that says Classes 1 and 2 can be allowed on sidewalks unless the city has a code saying otherwise. So that's the type of stuff we'll try to look at with the Code and Standards Update, is to try to reconcile some of those inconsistencies or conflicts between local and state code, and also update our definitions to be more clear on those specific.
But it looks like we're proposing changes, right? The ones in red are changes we're proposing, correct?
Yeah, so th- those changes are to try to reconcile some of those challenges, but we want to just dive into it further on a more nuanced micro scale around stuff as well as like Lindsay was talking about, the shared use path project along 228th, develop like what signage we need to clarify around where those facilities are allowed, or those where the scooters are allowed, where the bikes are allowed, what the speed limit should be. But you're correct, yeah, we can continue to look into the table.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it for this plan, because again, there's a big section of 228th where we have a lot of schools where e-scooters are not allowed anywhere. So I think that's an important one. And again, lots of other questions. I'm curious, when we look at the totality of all the projects, whether it be existing projects on the tip, plus the projects proposed here, are, are we sure we're addressing, like when I think about all of the challenges we have and all the criteria we have across the different things, we have some, some pretty big sticking points, again, on that main 228th corridor around the high schools. Are we making sure that we're prioritizing those areas as well, right? So one of the things that still hasn't been looked at is like the intersection in front of Eastlake High School. That intersection, are there things, have we looked at that and to see what kind of improvements? That is an intersection that creates a lot of backups because we do prioritize pedestrians, which is great, but we don't have a diagonal crosswalk, so people are hitting the crosswalk multiple times. So sometimes those types of intersections become an all-way crosswalk so that you don't stop the traffic as often, right, and some of those types of things. So I want to make sure we're prioritizing. We have the things around the schools, but let's prioritize not just around the schools, but where we have some of our biggest challenges so that those are places where we really could get cars off the street if we made it nicer and easier for bikes and pedestrians there. I also don't think that the town center should be treated any different than the other commercial centers, so we call out the town center differently in our criteria, but I think all the commercial centers should be considered equally in terms of prioritizations. Because I think that, you know, having crosses at the other commercial centers is probably just as important and maybe even more important because it might not have other things around it that would create crosswalks and things like that. And then there was just one other question that I didn't notice before, but on the east, the last project, the Eastlake-Samamish Parkway area, it looked like there were three crossings that we were going to do at a cost of $3 million, so I'm just curious what kind of crossing we're building for $1 million apiece, because that seemed like a lot.
I can probably chime in. So I, the, the improvements along here are for the crossing themselves, which would generally be like assumed to be something like a hawk or a hybrid beacon type crossing, you know, to, to be further determined through, you know, finalizing the design. But there's also a little bit of connection pieces that need to happen as well, so if we're trying to get people from our arterial network where there will either is or hopefully will be pedestrian and bicycle facilities to the trail, sometimes that's not a completely direct connection, and you kind of need to traverse along Eastlake-Samamish Parkway as well. So there's a couple of connection pieces there in addition to just, just looking at the, at the type of crossing. We also kind of considered things like some signage and some dealing, you know, cutting back of shrubberies, and there's a couple other things included in that project as well, but the, the crossings themselves obviously are the highest piece of that.
Okay, great, thanks. And again, look forward to the answers to what I submitted. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dr. Gupta?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I also have a lot of questions. I apologize, I did not get them sent in beforehand, but I will after tonight's meeting. But just since we did bring up the where's it gone? The, the table that we were just looking at, the e-scooter and e-bike policy recommendations. What happened to my notes? So the third row, the roads for speed limits under 25 miles per hour, it seems to indicate that we don't have anything for bicycles on that, so it's, all of those are currently allowed, but there's just nothing in code that says that. Is that what that's reflecting?
Currently, yes, there's nothing in any of our city policy documents or code that reflects that, so that's why it's being recommended there.
Okay, thank you.
Be further identified through, like Andrew was talking about, through the code and standard update process.
Okay. And for the first row there, for sidewalks of under bicycles and e-bikes, Class 1 and 2, the cells are purple, but the text is black. Is that, is there a reason for that, where all the other changes, the text is purple?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, unless.
Thank you.
Okay.
At an eagle eye.
And then the, the first asterisk on the first row there, where it says, unless there's no alternative for a motorized foot scooter or Class 3 electric assisted bicycle to travel over sidewalk as part of a bicycle pedestrian path. I wasn't sure what that meant. What, when would that come into play?
So that's one of those RCW codes that we were just trying to reflect in the table. So yeah, there's a specific RCW that says e-bikes are not allowed on sidewalks unless there is no facility within the curb line, and then in that case, Class 3 e-bikes are. So yeah, that only applies to the Class 3.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And yeah, lots, lots to come that will be coming in an email tonight. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you. I just had a few questions. For a lot of these projects, there's, there's like sidewalks as a part of it, but there's already existing sidewalk. Is, are we widening the sidewalks? Like there's like, for project number one, there's already a sidewalk. And it's showing improvements to including an eight-foot wide or greater sidewalk. Is that like across the board for all projects that are similar? Widening the sidewalks when there is an existing sidewalk?
So I think when, before Lindsay hopped into the top 10 projects, we were kind of talking about some of the constraints we looked at for all of these and trying to achieve that LTS score of 2 and that goal. So sometimes aiming for that LTS 2, there may be a sidewalk there, but it may not meet that standard. So that's why you see sometimes we're recommending that in place where there is an existing sidewalk. But our goal would be to, you know, reconcile some of those issues in the design process of like, is it sufficient? Is it kind of worth the cost to retrofit at that phase?
I think that most of these projects are, are providing a very high level of cost for, if we, if we're able to be able to achieve our our level of traffic stress for bike and pedestrians along those facilities, these are some tools that we could use and the costs associated with them. As that project is placed, you know, towards preliminary, on the tip, and we begin preliminary engineering alternatives analysis, of course, we'd be meeting with Council to look at goals to see if indeed we would want to potentially replace an existing infrastructure with something else or amend something.
For project number nine, there was striping improvements in wayfinding. Can you clarify that? There's, there's a really wide sidewalk. Is it like to, to separate like where pedestrians are and where bikes would be?
Yeah, so that's, that's definitely the intent. You'll see throughout the region, sometimes they'll have the little bike and ped icons within the pavement, sometimes a center line delineating that. We've received complaints about the bikes that do use the shared use path sometimes going too fast, ordering its calls for a 15 mile an hour speed limit, so it could include signage around that, and also signage that may clarify that bikes are allowed per standard. And maybe just signage, you know, letting people know there's a shared use path, kind of what it connects, some wayfinding sign of in that way of like the town center's this way, the commons this way, these schools are this way. So it'd be a combination of improvements we kind of flesh out in the design process.
Okay, I do think that wide path on 228th is a little confusing, so it's good to hear that there's like striping plans. For project number 10, since that goes right into the new high school, is ISD going to be paying for this? I mean, to me, it seems like they should be actually.
This was identified, of course, as a priority location for improvements. It's on our principal arterial, right near schools. Any project that comes in that would be adjacent to that would have frontage improvements and have to go through the entire, they have right-of-way permits, they have requirements through their TIA that they would need to provide, I believe. I need to check on the status of that, but I believe they are looking at putting in different infrastructure, like a flying T or different infrastructure along the way, too. So some of this may intersect if, if the adjacent property is developing, then they would be putting in something, but it's important that we have this in place as well as our level of traffic stress to ask for different types of improvement along the way.
Okay, so ISD may be paying for it. I just know that they don't have a permit in, right? Is that what you're saying? Sorry, I'm not clear.
I, I need to check on the status. I believe they have a right-of-way permit in. We were working very closely a few years ago with both, of course, Isaguas School District as well as the city in terms of mitigation requirements for that development. I just would need to get back to you on the details and where they are.
Okay. And it's good to see that there's going to be like hawk signals on Eastlake-Samamish. I know when I'm on there and if I like, if I am biking on the I know when I'm on there and if I, like, if I am biking on the road, like, it's hard to know when to cross over, you know, even as a walker, it's hard to know because you see all the, you know, signs that say private driveways and you don't really know if you should be crossing down there. The only question I have on Eastlake-Samamish Parkway is in front of Samamish Landing, and this is like well before I was on council. I always found that really peculiar that, you know, not peculiar, but to me, it just seems like a really challenging location. There's a lot of cars there during the summer because there's really nowhere to park and so they're all up and down the road. And so then we have this one crosswalk and then it like ties up traffic because all the cars are stopping. And it's not part of our tip, but has the city ever, has the city even as a part of this, you know, received feedback that there, that we should improve it? Or do we think that there are ways that we can help improve safety there? Like I've always thought there should be like a footbridge over that so that we wouldn't have, you know, the traffic congestion. And I don't know if that is, would ever be considered again. Because like I said, this happened before I was on council, but I always thought that area was an issue.
Yeah, it's great questions. We're going to have to get back to you.
Okay.
Great questions.
Thank you. And that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, where do most of the bike riders ride their bikes in Samamish? So I'll let you, I'll just give you a fill in. So Eastlake-Samamish, the trail, Dothe Hill Park, Soaring Eagle Park, Eastlake-Samamish Parkway on the actual road. We also have people who come down Inglewood Hill Road and then 244th out the backside if I'm going out to the valley. What trails do most of the bike riders ride in Samamish? So Dothe Hill Park, right? And then Eastlake-Samamish Trail. So those would be the trails. And then Soaring Eagle would be the other one, right? How about who commutes to work on bikes? And how many are there and where do they actually originate from and then head to? Have we studied that in this plan? No. Okay, thanks. So I just look at those first three questions and just look at this and say, if this is going, so I'm right now just focusing on the bikes. So if I'm looking at bikes alone, I, I would think that the study, if I'm going to put a plan together, I would look at those three things. Which means the first group of people or stakeholders I'd go look at is bike commuters for work and then our clubs who actually ride their bikes. And Friday nights down at Mary Moore, Jerry Baker Velodrome, that's where those groups all meet on Friday nights. And so I would imagine they're not hard to get a hold of and a lot of those people are residents of Samamish. So have they been contact, have those groups been contacted to help with this plan? Okay, I thought so. So.
I think Audrey was going to answer.
Oh, sorry, Audrey.
It was a great question. We'll get back to you.
Okay. So the next is trails. So if, if I'm riding a bike or if I'm walking on trails, there's several different surfaces that, some are inexpensive, some get expensive and that kind of stuff. Have we looked at considering wildlife corridors that would be included in this study as trails to move people, pedestrians and bikes?
As part of the schools analysis, we did look at a variety of trail concepts, mostly going north-south throughout the eastern side of the city in the utility corridors. And we'd be open, there's no kind of predefined notion of what the surface material could be. It could be paved, you could still have ADA trails that are like crushed, finally crushed aggregate. So those are all still possibilities.
Okay, great. Because I'd like to see that added to the study. I already asked about the, who you contact. So the other part I was looking at is like, after reading the whole thing and going to the meetings, by the way, I'm looking, as a council member and as, I'm looking for some easy wins. So, so the first one I would look, I would hope we studied or will be studying is speed reduction. So that's the first one. Second would be striping. And I want to ask on the striping, because I would like to move away from, for safety purposes, I would, I would hope that the, if you give me some numbers on the cost to use the thermoplastic striping versus the water-based reflective paint. Because the lifetime of that is anywhere from seven to 10 years. And so if I can, I don't know what it costs per year for us to put the water-based paint with reflective glass on it, one coat. I also don't know how much it would cost if I did a second coat on top of that for more resilience and longevity of it. So maybe we only have to do it every two years. So the whole idea is, we don't have, this, this body has never looked at the cost on a safety issue on striping and then what actual material to put down and the cost of that. So that leads me to my next point, because I think that's an easy win on the safety issue, right? Because if I'm, if I'm afraid to ride on the lane and I'm riding at night with my lights and it's raining or whatever the condition is, even if the sun is shining, if the cars can see the lane that separates me on the same road, the chances of them hitting me drops. All right? Plus it tells me as the, it tells the rider, this is your lane, stay in it. Okay. That leads me to the lanes or the shoulders. Because I think this is a super easy win and you have it on your project list is just stripe the shoulder for Eastlake-Samamish Parkway from one end of the city to the other and turn it into a bike, bike lane. And I, I understand that the trail is right there, but two of the council members have already spoken to, or maybe even three, to the whole e-bike thing. So if people are going to go 25 to 30 miles an hour on a bicycle or an e-bike, they, they're technically not, they shouldn't be down on the trail. Because that speed limit's 15 miles. It's not enforced, I get that, but that's the speed limit. Okay? So it gives people, if I'm commuting and I come down the hill and bam, I'm not, if I'm on my e-bike, get me to work on time. So I don't understand, have we, is that Eastlake-Samamish Parkway? Because I'll get to the crossing, well, the crossings have already been addressed, but you see what I'm saying? That's a, that's a big, easy win and a lot of miles for striping.
I think the, we can certainly look into that. And I, I think what I would want to look at as part of that analysis is what the speed is along Eastlake-Samamish. Because if there were a, if a vehicle were to strike a bicyclist going at a certain speed, your risk of like death goes up significantly. So that would be my main concern. But we can certainly look at how much pavement width is available there. If you were able to provide, say like a buffered bike lane, that would definitely be a safer environment. So we can look into that.
So the speed limit's 35 until you get to Samamish, Samamish Landing goes down to 30. And I'll just tell you at Jobo's and where the old 7-Eleven was, where there's a crosswalk and the light, people, because of the configuration of the parkway, that, they slow down, people slow down going through there. So I, I would imagine, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but if we had three or four more crosswalks that were designed similar to the one at either the landing or at the 7-Eleven, if there were three more at key intersections or key crossing spots, you would slow down the traffic. And I agree, it's kind of, okay, and I'm sorry, this is going to, the TMP though, should address the parkway. Because if the parkway was actually designed and looked like a parkway and felt like a parkway, traffic would actually drive at 35 miles an hour and it would be safer. And then the last thing on that is, the other thing I'd look at is, if you have the time, would be to double stripe the shoulders. Even if I put a one-inch gap and then I do another four-inch or five-inch stripe and it's a double white line, it, it creates a feel that that's safer. And it, what it does is it's the illusion that the, the lane is narrower even though it's not, which also reduces speed. Okay, not to lecture, stop, sorry. Okay, I already did the shoulder. Don't want to ask that question. And I agree with Councilmember Lamb, if we're looking at projects one and 10, to go on to this as something that I would say, yeah, this is a good plan, has my blessing, those two projects would have to be tied directly to Issaquah School District as the mitigation all the way from their, the school to Pine Lake, all the way up. So don't let them say that, oh, we're just going to come up to 40th. No, it's all the way to the main intersection. Okay? Because the buses should be, or traffic should go around to that intersection to come down to the school and not cut through the neighborhoods. So if that's the case, then we have to make it so that they want to actually go that direct, they want to use that route. So, so have them pay for that. E-Bright Creek, I thought 212th, we're already doing something on 212th with the wetland and that, we've already done an emergency repair on that. So when I look at the TMP, I believe 212th is already on there.
The, the 212, you're correct, the T, the 212th, we are monitoring, right? The gabion baskets that are supporting the sidewalk that are settling, we're monitoring that. It's not settling as fast as we initially thought it was, which is good news.
Good news.
So we will keep, continue monitoring that. I'll speak to that a little bit next week in my work plan update. So that was good news there that will, and we, we did complete an alternatives analysis with some geotechnical work. So that was really great to help us inform some alternatives. When the time is right to either address that as an emergency repair, then we can, of course, also look at timing wise, too, in terms of adding, adding infrastructure. But at that point, it's, it's going to be building a bridge and elevating the roadway.
Yeah, because I think adding an elevated sidewalk in that wetland would be a really good advantage or benefit to the community. Last one, and then just because this was, I'm, I'm four for four now, yeah, I'm four for four on e-motocycles running into our residents who ride e-motocycles. And one of them tonight, I cracked up because he was nine. And he was on an e-motorcycle, cutest little thing, number four, ride-on guy, looks like a motorcycle, it is a motorcycle. It was sweet. And he had his helmet on and I told him, good job wearing your helmet, get home and get onto private property and get off our road. And I was very nice about it to him and we had a little joke and little, little conversation there about how he's not, not allowed on the sidewalks with his motorcycle. What a cutie, right? And then other, our middle schoolers that I've been talking to, and so the question that they always ask me is, you know, are the police officers going to arrest us? And I say, oh, they'll probably give you a ticket and a little talking to, a little first they'll give you a talking to and then they're going to give you a ticket if they see you more than once. So be respectful and stay off, stay off the roads, stay off the sidewalks. So here's the problem that they have. So they said, well, where do we ride then? And so is there any plans for e-motorcycle facilities? Or do we have, have, do we have, which part, which, and which department then would we even, Scott, I guess that's for you, which department would even address the acquisition of land to have, say, a pump track and a track for e-motocycles within Samamish? I mean, I know where 50 acres of land is for sale, it's pretty cheap. If we had some acquisition money, we could actually look at actually providing a benefit and getting these young people a place that they can actually ride their e-motocycles.
Councilmember Trine, to answer your question, I think right now we would have to get direction from council to pursue anything like that. And that comes with a lot of risk and liability, as you might expect if someone were to go down that road. I think what we heard from our police is that e-motocycles are best suited to be on the road licensed with 16 and older drivers actually operating them that have gone through driver training because they do go significantly faster than any of the other, which is why they're not part of the bike and ped master plan.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. You'll be relieved to know I just have one question and I just wanted to add. It was mentioned, I think in chapter six, where you had looked at some crash history, which was very informative. I hadn't realized we'd had a fatality. But I also just wondered if you could expand that to like maybe all crash history in Samamish, whether it was pedestrian involved or not. It might just inform us on, on any other issues that we haven't really looked at that would inform or would kind of impact our bike and ped plan. So I would encourage you to expand that, just kind of look and see, do we have other hotspots in our city that we haven't really looked at and how is that going to impact this plan so that we don't discover a problem along the way and that we just didn't know about it? So I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will add, our traffic engineering team works with the police regularly. So we have a lot of great reports that, that we end up receiving after, after an accident. We also, there's quite a few accidents that are not reported as well, right? And so that's, it becomes a challenge if we need to know about if there's a potential safety concern anywhere along the right-of-way. So C-Click Fix does help us with that. So when we ask the community to provide responses in these types of plans, help, help us gather data as well. But we're happy to expand.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have two more councilmembers that would like another bite of the apple. I'll go ahead and go first and just ask a couple of questions. I thought it was a fair comment about, you know, have we talked to Washington Bikes and so forth? But I think though, that the point of the plan is to plan. And part of the reason why we don't have commuters on bikes is we don't have connected systems in order for them to get from A to B to C. So it's a little hard to project, but I do think that talking to these organizations is a great idea and finding out what learnings that they have. Because they, I know that they partner with different municipalities to deliver, you know, background information. But it's also really hard, I think, to understand just what, how's behavior going to change? One question I had, just so I understand it better, is, you know, as I look at this Ahaly study, it's its own thing, and we've been making comments about, gee, I like that idea, but can we make that traffic circles cheaper? Probably going to have the same thing about some of the things that you guys are talking about. I appreciate the fact you put a high-end budget, but at some point I'll be looking for the ballpark to understand where that sweet spot is. Because for me, what I'm trying to understand, for example, when we say gap in sidewalks, I'm also wondering, is, does that mean that there's a sidewalk only on one side and not on the other? Are we trying to meet a standard that is very high?
As far as project identification, we did differentiate between one side versus both sides. And I think in the future, as we tweak that criteria, that's the one piece we've already flagged of like, we want to give more points to where there's no sidewalks at all.
Right.
Yeah. So we, we hear you and we plan to update that analysis model to reflect that going forward.
Okay, that's going to be very helpful. The other thing I wondered about had to do with, are you looking at the intersection of where residents are complaining that traffic is too fast? We need traffic calming and the need for potentially, if it's not a sidewalk, something. So, you know, because I do think that that is part of the mobility plan. I'm wondering if there's a win here for us with some of the residents that have been salivating for anything to keep the traffic from speeding past where they are. Thinking it's Timber, Timber Lake, Timber Line, I'm not.
Crest?
Timber Crest, something.
The Crest.
Timber, there's timber involved.
Oh.
It's timber adjacent. And so we, we've talked, we've talked to residents there multiple times and they're, I'm just wondering, is there a way that this, that there's an intersection point where we're able to look at the data from, from residents saying, yeah, but the cars speed by and gee, we could use, you know, could we put a crosswalk where? speed by, and gee, we could use, you know, could we put a crosswalk where, and would that help? And would that make a difference? Because those are just open questions for me. I'm hoping that they're not expensive questions, but that's, that's my question. So I'm not expecting an answer here.
We can answer.
Unless you have an answer.
We do. So first, when, the recommendations, of course, will, that are in this, will refine along the way, right? But there, I think there is an intersection, if you will, from, from what we've heard from residents and what our observations are. And I would encourage the community anytime to submit a request in my Samamish. So if there's a speeding concern, the traffic engineering team and police work through that and then provide responses. It usually takes three to six weeks because there's data that goes into it, analysis that goes into it. So that's, that's an opportunity, aside from this plan. As well as we have a neighborhood traffic management program, there's details on our website, happy to share with that afterwards as well. That could be an opportunity. It's generally geared towards local roads, but that is a program, and it is funded in our tip as well.
I think that's great. I just want to make sure that the information that is actually being delivered by residents is filtered in somehow into our planning. I want to make sure it doesn't get siloed. I'm sure it isn't. So now, let's hear from, let's see, Councilmember Trainor, is your light still on? So then we'll go to Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I wanted to bring up, just so the rest of council could know, one of the questions or sort of pieces of feedback I had was around the measurable goals. So the first two measurable goals that were listed in the, in the plan, to me, were measuring activity as opposed to measuring outcomes. And so I think it's really important when we create, you know, how we're going to measure how we're doing, it needs to be focused more on the outcome. So as opposed to measuring, you know, how many bike lanes or how many crosswalks we put in, we should be measuring, you know, things like, you know, how many, how many trail, or how many pathways have we opened up in the half-mile radius around the schools, right? So that we have created those walkable corridors and things like that. So I think we need to take another pass at those, at those goals, because we need to, again, be measuring the right things. It either has to measure outcomes or value, not just activity. Because like, we could build, we could build, you know, 20 lanes of bike, or 20 miles of bike lanes, but if they're not in the places where they need to be, who cares? Right? And I know that's not our plan, but I just think that that will help the community see that what we're doing is really looking at those, those outcomes and the value that we're providing. To tie it back to, what were the goals of doing this in the first place, right? Creating safe routes to school, creating safe commuter routes, creating safe pathways to, you know, community amenities. So I wanted to share that with the council, that I think that's a big thing we should look at before we approve the plan.
Great comment. We are already looking at that, not specifically for this plan, because this plan is meant to inform our transportation master plan, where we would like to look at this holistically across the city, so that we have those measurable goals and metrics associated with our six-year capital plan, as well as our 12 and 20 years. So that at the end of the day, you know, we can be able to say, we've, we've, you know, installed this many new miles of bike lanes or sidewalks that connected this many miles of those, those assets for the community as well.
Yeah, and I want to concur. Excellent, thank you. And I want to concur with Councilmember O'Farrell and the mayor, that I think in my comments, I also asked for all the data, like all the crash data, as well as all of the community feedback. Because I do think, like, there have been a lot of near misses around the crest that aren't going to come up as crashes, but I know people have been concerned. And Mary, I do think it's actually the main drive into Timberline, where that roadway is very wide, and so some of those houses along there have complained a lot about there are no crosswalks, and the traffic comes through very quickly because there are no amenities to slow people down. And so, you know, if you've got kids along there, so it might be Timberline adjacent or Timberline inside. So I do know that when I knocked doors along there a few years ago, that was a big area of concern, right? I did want to ask, and maybe I need to go through the mayor, but could we ask Councilwoman Trainor to share some of the data he had on where people are walking and hiking and riding? That you shared the statements, because I think that would be, again, it's informative, but I do agree with the mayor, kind of, the past performance is not indicative of future returns, because I do think this should be focused on, where do we want people to ride? Like, I know I tend to ride where there are facilities. It's not that that's where I want to ride necessarily, I may want to be riding in another area, but I'm not going to ride where I don't feel it's safe. So I think that is one of the, the big things our plan needs to address, is not just where, where do people ride today, but where would they ride if there were facilities, and where do we want them to feel safe riding? And also, if there's information on, is it true that cars are less likely to hit bikes if the striping is brighter? I mean, it sounds logical, but I don't know if that's necessarily true. So I would love to know if there's actual data behind that statement, because I think that would be really informative, if improving some of our striping would, would improve the safety. That's, that's really important to know. My last thing would be that I think it's important also to look at, you know, we talk about commuting and commuters. How do we assess what, what some of the new or the future will look like? Because the light rail is new, right? And right now, you know, if you can get down to Marymore Park, you can get to Microsoft, you can get to Bellevue. Very soon, you'll be able to get over into, into Seattle. Are those, are those routes that if there were safe bike routes, would people take them? Would they commute more? Would they only commute more in good weather or bad weather? So I don't know if that's surveys, I don't know if we got some of that data from our community meetings, but I think that would be, in fact, very informative. I do think it's also interesting to look at, because right now, it's just my personal perception, which is not very scientific, but how have our weather patterns been changing? Even in the winters? Do we have more heavy, heavy rains and fewer rainy days? Because I think that could also affect, you know, how often people will be out and about. And I also didn't see, and I forgot to put this in there, but have we, have we looked at expanding the sidewalk on the southbound side of 228th, where all we have is sidewalks, and there's no room for bike lanes? Because right now, on the northbound side of 228th, we have the shared path. But it's not wide enough for two directions of bikes plus pedestrians. And the other side of the roadway, we just have a normal width sidewalk. So I do think, especially along that part of those corridors, where we're expecting more transit and more, you know, we have, the high schools are there, right? There's a lot more pedestrian and bike activity already. And I didn't see anything looking at potentially expanding that. So that would be something I would love to look at as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, sorry, very quickly, because Washington Bikes was mentioned, I know one thing they have specifically asked for is a Vision Zero plan from the city. And I don't know if that would live in the Bike and Ped Plan, or if that's more suited for the TMP update next year, because that is more of a holistic goal. But that's something I'd love to see. I know we're fortunate enough to have a whole lot of crashes in Samamish, but I imagine the potential for conflict would rise as we create more facilities and hopefully encourage more ridership and pedestrian access. So that's something I would specifically like to see. And then I was also pleased to hear that we're looking at the evaluation criteria, because that did, that was one of my specific questions, was for like the pedestrian facilities gap, you get nine points if there are no pedestrian facilities, but eight points if there are pedestrian facilities on one side, and that seems out of balance. It makes more sense for a bike facilities gap, where if you have a bike lane on one side, and you don't, you don't have it on the other side, you want to try and fill that. But if there's a sidewalk on one side of the road, that seems like it would serve well enough that we might prioritize another area that has no pedestrian facilities. So yeah, glad to hear that's, that's on the horizon, because that did stick out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I will open the public hearing today. It will be open until October 21st. So I'll just do that part. That was very exciting. And really, everyone should give that a go. And I believe we could have public comment that relates specifically to this topic. And in this case, there were people that did sign up, and I'm not sure that they meant to. So we had Lorene Leo on here, who I believe is gone. Is that correct? And Heather Murphy-Rains, also gone. But we have, to fill in the gap, we have Mary Wichter.
And I think you should always fill in the gaps. Mary Wichter, Samamish for 25 years. I did email something in. In the past, I've talked about, I think I dared you and even double dared you, there's got to be one or two cul-de-sacs in the whole city that might help people in an emergency or get to a park or get to a school. And I challenge you to find one, because these people do lovely work, but it really looks like the roads. And isn't looking at those crossways and anything. So I'm still, I'm triple daring you now, you got to find three of them. And I can make suggestions if you like. Actually, I think the place north of Inglewood Middle School, all those people could walk in teams and with parents and with student leaders, and you would develop a community. And it would be really cool if you could enter Inglewood from where the stormwater pond is, where all the new park stuff is. And you might have to buy some land or get a little permission to do that, but I think you need to do that. And I know it's not part of the plan, needs to be added as like a Mary Wichter Fill the Gap top part, if I can say that. And I had sent you stuff from Sweden, a map, and I had sent you the, the survey from 10 years ago in Seattle about that. The second thing is, if you have a road that exists, that no longer exists because it's blocked and needs to be unblocked, and it's hurting the north access to Tamrac, which is on City Road, and the blockages are on City Land, which is in what used to be a roadway and now is really blocked, I think that needs to get cleared. And I've spoken with some council members at Council Coffee, I've sent stuff in, I haven't heard back. I did spend most of last month down at the archives getting some more data, so you have some records I can send in. But that really needs to get unblocked. And then I'm going to go to Louis Thompson, because Louis Thompson, since it's being worked on, it does close down, and it makes it hard for people, and we get that, and we know it's going to finish by December, or November, or October. But I want to talk about Louis Thompson Road, because you said there's a project for Louis Thompson Road up at 212th, which is awesome. But since Louis Thompson Road is being constructed, and they're doing the curbing right now to get more curb appeal, is it going to match, like all this stuff? Like, it'd be a good testing to say, take this road and run it through your machine with your policies, and what would it get? And one thing I'd like it to get is, people drive 45 on that road, even though it's a 35 mile an hour speed limit, and I know you're building the roads to 35, but if they're driving 45, it's not safe. And you have that LTS, the, the traffic tension that you have there. So if you dropped, and I believe for Level 2, you need to drop it to 25 miles per hour. Inglewood's 35, it's a little steeper, but not as curvy. Snake Hill Road is 25. You've got flat streets that are 25 to Big Rock Park and 30 for Pine Lake. I don't see why Louis Thompson should be 35, so I would like to see the speed limit dropped. And then, I probably am out of time, but I've emailed in my stuff, so you can read it, and I'm glad that you're continuing the public hearing, so I can ramble on at another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that didn't get a chance to sign up for the public hearing? Debbie Trainor?
Debbie Trainor lived here since 2010. I just had a couple of comments and questions, really, and I will give it a deeper dive between now and the next meeting. But the total cost of those prioritized projects is $65 million. And so I can't help but wonder, are we even remotely realistic about putting those in a plan and thinking we're going to be able to accomplish them? It just scares me. That's an awfully big number for, for the work that, that's being done. And that, in my view, doesn't even include everything, right? It's just the priority projects. So the first thing, I would like to have all of the projects, the ones that aren't priority, so we can see what didn't make the cut, and also see the really total cost it's going to be for us to actually have a bicycle in pedestrian-friendly city. I also, just let me look through my notes a little bit. So I'm used to frontage improvements, funding a lot of these things. And one of the challenges that Samamish has is, we have so many rural roads that never had any sidewalks, or even, some of them don't really have, they just have open ditches, like the Parkway. So aren't there any of these parts of the road that actually could be funded by development as part of their frontage road requirements? Because we, you talked about the area, which way area was it that you were saying that might be? Oh, the, the new high school, Issaquah High School. What about all of the town center? It straddles 228th. So if there are planned developments that are going to frontage on 228th, shouldn't they be building these sidewalks and bike lane facilities for us? And I just want to make sure that, that's just one example, there could be other developments along these routes. Another one, he's not here, so I can say this, is Eastman's project that would be on the Parkway, that's going to frontage on the Parkway, and if there are needed improvements, we should have those happen. And they should be funded by developers, just like if I built a house, I would have to create the sidewalk in front of my house. And those are big expenses that I'm paying at the neck, but that's, that's just normal development cost. I'd also, I think it would be cool to really just, one of the things I like about Seattle or other bikable cities is, they have designated bike routes. So we're not doing it all over the place. We're identifying these key places where we're going to make it a good route for you to get to. I don't know if that's feasible here or not. And the last thing I'll say, as I run out of time, the Parkway needs to assess how many driveways are accessing that Parkway, and if you have us crossing 100 yards down the street, you're putting someone at risk, because they're going to try to get to that crossing and not have a safe place to walk to get there.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online?
Oh, sorry. Looks like there's a couple of, please.
So I live up on Renaissance Ridge, so I have a lot of experience with walking down Southeast Eighth from 242nd to 228th during the school day of Skyline. And I can tell you, there's a lot of kids coming, using that sidewalk with electric scooters and electric bikes. They're not taking the bike path, so they're coming down the sidewalk, and they don't really tell you, they're coming, I'm passing on the right, I'm passing on the left. And believe me, getting hit by a electric scooter is just like getting hit by an electric bike. So something needs to happen there. Either they're scared of taking the bike path, or they don't know the etiquette for slowing down and saying, hey, I'm passing on your right, I'm passing on your left. But, you know, that's not 228th, but it's still a place where you can get hurt if you're walking, because the sidewalk's small. So that's all I had to say. Jody Walgren? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come up.
This is Gillian Wallace of the historic town of Inglewood. I can let you guys know that I am very excited, as long, as well as many of our residents, that we can have some sidewalk protection on Inglewood Hill Road. Having only access on one side and no sidewalk to get to the sidewalk, or crosswalk or anything, it's very appreciated. Thank you. We also have a large number of bike trans, what's it, they're commuters. And they come down our Inglewood Hill Road, they get on the bike path, and they go to either Issaquah, or they go to Redmond. And that is a very, very common bike route, and we are appreciating that it is getting built up and getting filled in, because a lot of our residents come down that hill, but all the people up from Sahali Way are also coming down our hill, because we're a spoke, right? We're a main intersection, a main road to get down to the Lake Road. And the Lake Road is where everybody in rain or shine are biking down to get to work. And yes, they do need that extra, either a higher speed limit, or the pedestrian path, and having two different options of, or side, or stripes, or something. But we do need to have that access, because it is a, already a major intersection or major route of, of traffic. And a lot of the commuters that are bike riding are not actually taking 228th and then getting like, they're, they're more getting to a bike, or a bus pass, or some, getting to a stop. They're not actually going to their final destination on 228th. Whereas along the Lake Road, they are getting to their final destination of, at the other end of the Lake Road. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And if there's no one else in the room, oh.
Hi, Jack Chambers. Am I allowed to ask questions of the panel or do I just have to yell confidently?
You know, you can, you can ask questions. People stare at you with a stony face and not answer them at all because we can't. But you can, but we will hear your question and we will take that into account. And you've got two people here, actually three people, just Lindsay's online too, who will hear everything you're saying. And so your message will get across.
Okay, okay, got it. Since we're going with the yell confidently route, I would like to, for us to consider some more like smaller scale options for bike ped, like curb extensions and scramble crossings, I heard got mentioned earlier. Because I really like seeing that stuff when I bike around in Kohani. Some of the crosswalks are just really, really wide and we could make it way narrower just with a curb extension. Protection methods for protected bike lanes, I didn't see mentioned in the report. I could've missed that. But the difference between like huge concrete barrier with planters and bollards is significant when you're biking on a big road like that. I also heard mentioned that we should look into how, I think Councilmember Tree mentioned how adults and commuters are using the bike lanes. I think it's especially interesting to look at how younger adults are using those same bike lanes. Because if we have 30% of our population is under the age of 18 and those people don't generally have a car, I think it's really important that we're considering where they're going specifically. They're probably gonna stay more local. And then finally, on, I think it was BP number 10, when we're looking at the one that goes all the way down to city limits, making sure that that doesn't just like stop in the middle of nowhere is, can be really important because that's a scary freaking road and I don't wanna bike down that. But I think that is it for me.
Thank you very much. By the way, the intersection that had the traffic counts is 192nd Northeast, 192nd Drive Northeast near 194th Way Northeast. So just to give some, a little bit more clarity there. Is there anybody online that would like to give public comment for this hearing?
Those who have pre-registered, please raise your hand if you'd like to give online Looks like that's all for public comment.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you very much for the work on this. I know we're headed in the right direction and it's nice to know that we have a direction to head. So.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for your feedback tonight. We heard all the questions and all the feedback, so we will work on compiling some responses and post those to the website in the next agenda packet ahead of the 21st.
That's great because I know that there's some public comment as well. So that's terrific. So with that, we will rush headlong into unfinished business. And we have a presentation now on departmental work plans. So Mr. City Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give us a moment here to get set up. So tonight, what we'd like to do is to start the process to update council on where we are as part of the mid-biennial budget process. And just as a reminder, council adopted a tier budget. We are a little over nine months into that. And so what we wanna do is we wanna start off by walking through at the department level where we are. And by doing that, we're looking at our work plan items because that's the best way to understand where we're going and what we're doing. These are gonna be the bigger items in the work plan. It's not gonna include smaller projects and it's not gonna include any of our day-to-day operations, but these are bigger projects that are highlighted on the work plan. So as we're gonna go department by department, that's why you see half of our leadership team here this week and then half will come next week to walk through where we are. And then by the time we get through, walking through the work plan items and what's going on with those, that will prepare for the actual budget that will be presented as part of the mid-buy review in, starting in November 5th, because November 4th, we have moved the meeting. So with that, so a little bit of a plan overview. Overall, we are making some great progress. I think you heard some of that tonight. We're working on our functional plans and we have a lot of other projects going on. However, some projects are progressing a little bit slower than originally planned. There are a number of factors that go into this. As you all are aware, capital project expenses are coming in higher than budgeted. Materials are harder to find, the cost of money is higher, there are a lot of different reasons for that. We have some competing priorities that have arisen that were not part of original plans. Some items are dependent on schedules that are outside of our control, sometimes our project partners. Certain items were deliberately extended to achieve better results and you'll hear more of that as we get into the individual departments. And then as you're aware, we do have some staffing vacancies that reflect that there's no one to actually take the project on at the moment. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Vicky to start talking about the actual budget side of this.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, Vicky Carlson, Finance Director. So as Scott just mentioned, we're doing a work plan update as well as discussing the budget amendments and adjustments that you'll see coming before you, starting in November. The idea is, is that you will hear everything tonight and next week is, next week or the week after? Next week. So you'll hear everything so that by the time the budget amendments and adjustments come to you next month, there will be no surprises. You will have already seen everything. You will just simply get the summary. So again, work plan update, the work plan and the budget was created last year and things have changed. So you're gonna hear about some of the changes tonight. When the budget amendments and adjustments come forward in November and as they talk about them tonight, you're gonna see them kind of bifurcated into two different buckets. So we're gonna be talking about amendments. And amendments change the total fund balance and they're legally required. So an example of that is adding in the utility tax. That was not part of the budget last year because council didn't adopt it until this year. Takes effect January 1st of next year, so that will be included as a budget amendment. Then we also have adjustments that are not changing the total fund balance. They're not legally required, but we do do it for transparency. So we wanna give you that communication about some of the major changes. And some examples are, we had a project that was scheduled for this year. It's gonna move into next year, so the budget dollars simply shift from year to year. And just as a reminder, we do budget at the fund level and on a biennial basis. So we wanna manage the budget on a two-year perspective. So we plan to come to you with budget amendments and adjustments twice. Why, once is a mid-buy, which will happen now, and then we'll do a final amendment and adjustment next fourth quarter in 2026 to wrap everything up. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move to the City Manager and hand it off to Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. For the record, Rachel Bianchi, Deputy City Manager. So you will see this format for each of the departments. We're gonna start with some things that we're proud of, that we've done so far this year. So as you all know, we had Rose before you just a few weeks ago talking about some great achievements that we've done in sustainability. I just wanna highlight a couple of things. One is, I really wanna give a shout out to our Sustainability Commission this year. They have really taken on the mantle of going out and being in the community and being leaders on sustainability, and that is exactly what we need from that group. So real kudos to them for all of that work. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, you approved us spending some additional dollars to end our relationship with Iron Mountain and bring all of our paper records in-house. That is going to happen imminently and we're really excited about that. We've been in front of you before to explain how big of a project that is. I encourage you to come down when the day that Iron Mountain comes to drop off the boxes so all of you can really see how big of a project that is. So there's some great stuff that is happening here. You will see this format, you've seen this format for the work plan before, right? What we've done is just collapsed it by department. We are only gonna focus in this presentation on things that are either not started, delayed, or in a few small cases, things that have just been removed. So in this case, we are not gonna be starting the Urban Forest Management Plan rightsizing as we had thought next year. And the reason is, because of one of the things Scott mentioned on a previous slide is there are, there are things happening out of our control. And so we are waiting for the state to update the wildfire urban interface. Did I get that right, David? Otherwise known as WUI maps, right? The WUI maps will, and those are the maps that will determine where there are potential areas for wildfire interface and not. Those are gonna be really important as we do the work to update the UFMP. And I'll steal a little bit of David's thunder. He's got projects that are also waiting on those because again, we wanna update our tree regulations when those are all done as well. So lastly, everything else here is on green. I do wanna highlight that we did add, just for clarity's sake, we added two of the police-related items here at the bottom of the City Manager's office so that you could just see that those are either completed or moving forward. So how does this relate to the budget amendments and adjustments that are coming forward? Because we're the City Manager's office, we have a couple of items here that just don't have another natural home. So you are gonna see an amendment to change our revenue projections to decrease it by $750,000. That's associated with CWU making different business decisions. On the positive, we are gonna increase the revenue by $320,000 because as you are aware, we did get some reimbursements from the state as a part of this past legislative session for costs that were incurred. So I do wanna say that Vicky and I had some clarifying discussions here late in the day. And the two items, the next two items that you see under amendments, they're actually gonna come to you as adjustments because they are not gonna change the bottom line of the budget, right? So apologies for that, but we are gonna move them into the adjustment category. And we will make sure to update this slide. So we did have an invoice that was missed last year for human services. Our friends in Bellevue would like us to pay them and we will. And then you may remember that as a part of the budget discussion, there were some changes to the fire fees that were requested by EFER and that you all had agreed to. They are coming.
The 21st.
The 21st, thank you. And so you will get a presentation directly from them, but that will result in increased expenses for the city. Other budget adjustments, again, that are not changing the bottom line, right? Many of you are aware that we brought on some additional communication services to help with some of the issues that we've been working through this year. We've had some really good and helpful retreats that we've had professional services for that. And then we have the outside counsel for the Inglewood issue. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, the Project Elephant services that are moving forward. So with that, I hand it over to my friend Mark. Thank you.
It's a big one. Good evening. Mark Baird, Admin Services Director. And in 2025, all of the projects on the work plan related to admin services are emergency management topics. And so here are some of the highlights that we've done so far this year. We've established this Sammamish Emergency Management Advisory Group. And this is a group comprised of like the water districts, the school districts, fire, police, a number of outside entities, PSE is on it, that meets on a quarterly basis to advise us on various aspects of our emergency management program. We've also updated our hazard mitigation annex, and this is an annex that goes along with King County's Hazard Mitigation Plan. And that's been updated and submitted to King County. We've taken a look at a couple of different aspects of sheltering. We've updated the Emergency Support Function Number 6, which pertains to sheltering, and the corresponding elements of our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Those two documents are currently with the Advisory Group for comment and edits. We are in the middle of our fall class of the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT Team. As a reminder, that training goes through November 8th where it culminates with a joint exercise with the City of Issaquah. We spent several Wednesdays at the farmer's market tabling and providing emergency management information. And we are participating on the 11th with the YMCA's Preparedness Information Fair. And finally, we did successfully inventory all of our Emergency Operations Center supplies. Crafted some lists for some replacement and that's a project that is ongoing and we will finish that at the end of the year. In addition to these, we do have a tabletop exercise scheduled for October 29th that will include many of our external partners as well, along with one of our consultants that will serve as a evaluator. So we'll get a good after action from that. The three projects that are on the, on the list are all in progress. The first two that have an adjusted schedule, that's really a manifestation of that Advisory Group. That group meets quarterly and we started it this year and it just took a meeting or two for us to get all of the participants from the various entities to join and to go through some of that preliminary stuff. So now that they're up and running and getting those things done, I think it was a little aggressive in terms of where we thought we could both stand up that Advisory Group and get some of the project work through them done as well. In terms of budget amendments, the only amendment or adjustment in admin services is adding budget for the Maintenance and Operations Center Fuel Tank Project. That project was funded and slated to be done in 2024 and we weren't able to do it until 2025. And so that's moving funding into 2025 in order to pay for that expenditure. And that project has been completed.
Thank you, Mark. David Pyle, Community Development Department. The Community Development Department got off to a good start in 2025. We had quite a bit of work brought forward to the council. We completed the shorelines and critical areas integration. We completed the first batch of miscellaneous code amendments. We set up an inclusionary affordable housing in Luffy program. And we have spent a lot of the middle of 2025 working on the Town Center project, including issuance of the initial release draft of the Conceptual Town Center Plan and Development Regulations, as well as a DSCIS and FSCIS in support of the project. That project is currently with the Planning Commission. We also have initiated and substantially completed the process to update the city's impact fees in support of the City Manager's work item. And we are in the process of completing a second batch of code amendments, which are making their way through the Planning Commission this week, last week and the following week. With regard to the work plan item, a majority of the work plan items are in progress and on track or not started and on target. The one that I do note that has an adjusted schedule is the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project. And this is a project that has evolved a bit since we started. And we are making sure to work through all the public comment received and work closely with the Planning Commission to get the best feedback we can from them on that. And I do wanna again, take what Rachel indicated before, that the tree regulations update is also delayed in response to the, excuse me, the Wildland Urban Interface mapping efforts and WUI codes with the State Building Code Council that are currently underway and that we are closely tracking. The other two items that are not started and delayed are the Neighborhood Centers Plan and the Centers and Corridors Plan. And those are projects that follow on to the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment work that we do. We're not gonna take on those until we're done with the Town Center work. So they're, they're delayed until the Town Center work has wrapped up. There are, there's only one budget amendment and this is for the Affordable Housing in Luffy revenue that is created by way of the Fee Schedule Amendment that we took on earlier this year. That is a, it's a, I guess it's a restricted revenue that can only be spent in a certain way according to the resolution the council passed. However, we do have to track this and show it as a revenue and as an expenditure within the budget and therefore that results in a budget amendment. There was only one budget adjustment that does not change the budget for DCD and that was the increased framework contract that we took on earlier this year to help support the balance of the work that we are doing on the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project. And with that, I'll pass it back to Vicky. And with that, I'll pass it back to Vicki.
Okay, and I get to wrap up with a really fun department. So I do want to do a shout out to my department. I have a very small department, but it's a very mighty department, and they have been moving mountains this last several months because we are implementing a new ERP system. Tremendous work has gone into that, and we will be going live with the Core Financials January of next year, which is three very short months away. But I want to assure you that we are not simply taking our existing processes into the new system. We've been taking time and stepping back to say, okay, how can we implement the system and actually create efficiencies and more transparency into the new system and create cost savings? As an example, we've revamped our chart of accounts, which will enhance our reporting capabilities once we're live with the system. One of the goals with the system is also to help other departments, right? Because right now, our existing ERP system, you can put a lot of information into it, but it's very difficult to get it out. And so departments use a lot of extra spreadsheets that they're manually keying data into, and we're trying to set the system up to move away from that so they can spend more time actually doing analysis and monitoring their budget than updating spreadsheets. So a lot of work is going into that, and at this point, we will be hitting our target of going live January next year. We're also starting to work on the budget preparation for the next. We will be taking full advantage of the system to create some better reporting and better just transparency in the budget process going forward. With that said, though, we have had a couple of process improvements we've been able to implement now outside of the ERP system, and I just kind of want to point that out because sometimes it's just you need to call attention to some good work that's being done. The first one is, is we've actually implemented ACH payments with our vendors. That was a big lift for our department to get that in place. It's created some efficiencies in processing invoices, and it also reduces budget. It is very expensive to issue a paper check and mail it. ACH payments are still a cost to it, but it's a much, much less, much smaller cost. The other change, which has been huge not only for our department, for citywide, and actually this affects you all, we did a really good job communicating with our staff about payday changes. We might not have communicated to you quite as much as we probably should have. As I was preparing this slide, it's like, wait a second, I don't know that we've really talked to council about this. So we have officially changed pay dates. Pay dates had been the 5th and the 20th of every month, and that made for a very, very short time to process payroll. Time sheets had to be due prior to the end of the pay period, and so we had a lot of estimating going on and a lot of manual corrections. Effective this pay period, so the October 1st to October 15th, pay dates have officially shifted. So it is now the 10th and the 25th, which does two things. It affects everyone in the city. Time sheets can now be due after the end of the pay period. That's a huge win for everybody. Plus, it creates more time to actually review the payroll, which will increase the accuracy of it. So two really big wins that I wanted to call attention to. Moving on to the next slide for budget adjustments, oh wait, sorry, work plan items. So we don't have a lot on our work plan because the big one is the financial system update. That is taking a significant amount of time, but all of our projects are currently in progress and on target. And then from a budget amendment perspective, Finance does own two of these. One of them is adding in the utility tax. So you will see an estimate for the $11 million, which is what we talked about during all of the planning phases of this. It is an estimate at this point. We won't know exactly how much revenue it generates until we start getting revenue in. And just so for you all, we do plan to track each revenue separately, so we'll be able to call out electric, gas, separate from gas, separate from solid waste, et cetera, so we can really track all those different components of the utility tax. The other one that will be coming forward is adjusting the beginning fund balances. When the budget was drafted, we had estimates for what our beginning fund balances are going to be. These are the actual adjustments to true up to what the beginning balances are. The general fund with an adjustment of less than $100,000, with that being our main operating fund, that is a very small adjustment. Departments did a very good job estimating how they were going to end the year. It's also very typical to see capital projects have bigger swings in how much are adjusted because when you have big projects, one project slides, and it makes for a big adjustment to the beginning fund balance. So that's the other adjustment you'll see coming forward from Finance Department. And just to kind of cover what the next steps of this is going to look like, so next week, so tonight you heard from the operating departments. Next week will be the capital departments, which will not only include their general fund components, but also the capital project funds. And then slated for October 21st, we have updated the financial policies. I believe I started that process way back when I got hired, and just, it's taken some time, but those are finally ready. So the plan is to have those in front of you on the 21st to review. The other thing that will happen on the 21st that is not on this slide is Eastside Fire and Rescue will be coming to do a presentation on the proposed changes in the fire fees with the idea that they would take effect along with all of our other fee adjustments on January 1st of next year. And then November 5th, we move into all of the financial legislative items that need to occur on an annual basis. We'll have three public hearings, a public hearing for the budget amendment and adjustments. And again, you will have heard all of them through this meeting and next meeting, so there should be no surprises. We're also working very hard to update our capital improvement plan. So you'll see 2026 through 2031, and we'll have a presentation to highlight the changes from the current one, and then also the 2026 property tax levy. And then two more things, we'll have just on a resolution format, updating the fee schedule, which will include the changes to the fire fees, and then also the salary schedule, and then financial policies. So public hearings opening on November 5th, closing on November 18th with plan adoption for all of those. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have. Counselor, do you have questions? Counselor Member Stewart?
How long ago did you start, and does it feel longer?
Actually, I've been thoroughly enjoying my job.
Excellent. Well, we enjoy having you here.
Time is flying. I wish I had more hours in the day to accomplish more. I'm kind of a type A personality, so--
What?
I've been pushing my staff really hard, but they've been moving mountains.
Excellent. Thank you. I have one tiny question for Mark. Has to do with the CEMP scorecard. Are they going to update the scorecard for us?
So they do the scorecard. So the CEMP is a five-year plan.
Right.
So we will around 2028 begin that process again. So they provide that scorecard for us and allow, you know, the CEMP is one of those things that is meant to sort of constantly improve upon.
Right.
And so we use that as a base for us because that's the first year that we were the recipients of a scorecard. It was a fairly new system for them. And so that's where you see, where I highlighted, we're doing some of the adjustments and changes because we're making those improvements to our CEMP ahead of having to, like, do all of the work to submit it to the state. So we have the same scorecard because we don't resubmit again to the state to have it scored until probably the end of 2028.
Okay.
We will likely do a draft like we did this previous time with them to kind of see where we're at and where we can make some adjustments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So that gave ample opportunity for other people to think of other questions. Anybody? No? Then we can release you. Thank you very much for your time and information. So we will move now to council reports, the City Manager's report. I'll kick off with my report for just a second, and that has to do with a letter that I initiated with some others as a result of being concerned that the east side was being left out of World Cup planning for transit. And so what we saw were lots of plans from Metro that showed a lot of Seattle emphasis, north, south, and nothing on the east side. And this put us into frankly, maybe not a panic, but just sort of a, it motivated us to actually get together. So I got together with about 11 other mayors and the, so call me tribe, and said, okay, well, let's do a letter then. Let's, let's start to figure out how we get ourselves on this map. So the letter is complete. I'd like to be able to get that signed and get that delivered because I'm on the RTC, the Regional Transit Committee, with Barb Di Michele, and so, and also Neil Black, who's from Kirkland. So the three of us as RTC members are presenting that so that we are putting some oath behind it and hoping that I'm seeing some head nods of agreement and understanding from members of council. Okay. That's exactly what I needed. Thank you.
Sorry, I have one question. Is just going to King County Metro?
No. It's going to RTC. It's going to--
Oh, okay.
It's going really to--
So just addressed to--
Okay, got it. But Metro will be included in this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you, Mayor. A quick couple of items for council. First is, it is time to pull our legislative agenda together because we reached that time in the year. So we are looking for three volunteers from council to serve on Legislative Agenda Committee with Mike and our lobbyists. And so just looking for council tonight, if you would be so kind as to collectively come up with three, then we can move forward and get a couple of meetings set up to get that process kicked off.
Sorry, people are up for reelection and/or going off council.
We will be done well before because we, the goal is to get our legislative agenda to, in front of you in time to get it adopted and then share it with our delegation prior to the session starting. So that would be within this fall window for sure, and ideally, it would take less than a month. In all candor, council, our legislative agenda is going to look roughly similar to what it did last year. I think those things are still valid. However, I think it's worth reviewing and having the conversation, so. I see three. Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Gupta, and Councilmember Farrell, and Deputy Mayor Lamb. So--
Yeah, I'll do it. I'm the issue ready to vote, too. No? Sure, okay.
All right. It sounds like we have our three.
I think you have your three.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, that was number one. Number two, I want to follow up, put Mark shared out on the Disaster Preparedness Fair. The YMCA is hosting a free disaster preparedness fair for all residents on Saturday, the 11th, 9:00 AM to 12:30. The city team will be participating, and there'll be a variety of other partners, as Mark shared, including Eastside Fire and Rescue, King County, Red Cross, Petersland Energy, et cetera. So please come out and join us for that. I do want to, excuse me, briefly speak to the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project. Due to a minor schedule delay from the walls, the earliest final paving can occur is mid-November, and we are concerned about the weather and the pavement not actually sticking. So we will get very, very close but not be fully done until next spring. However, the road will be substantially complete and opened by around the end of October, early November. So I just want to let folks know about that. We'll be making some temporary repairs to get through the winter, and then when the weather gets better, we'll finish that out. And then a final piece, as a reminder, Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and in honorance of that, the city hall will be closed on Monday. So just a reminder on that.
Looks like there's a couple more council reports. So Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just, we have an EFER meeting this Thursday, and just for full transparency, there will be a financial item on there, which is to transfer funds to cover increased employee costs now that the agreement has been reached with the union. So it is not a change to the bottom line, but it will be moving funds around. So if anybody hears about that, that's not unexpected as labor negotiations often lead to such adjustments.
Councilmember Gupta?
I have a Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow. I sent out the agenda over the weekend. The topics are indigenous defense caseload standards and a presentation from Fore Culture Open Doors. Let me know if you have any feedback there. I believe we have an Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting this Friday. I don't think we've received meeting materials, but as we receive those, I will send those out. And I have a King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting next Tuesday. I will share those materials as I receive them. But the topics are a presentation from their forestry team and a focus on KCD's wildfire work.
I have a Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. The main topic will be going over the comp plan for the Solid Waste Division.
And I have an emergency management meeting on Wednesday. So if there are no more council reports, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second?
We are adjourned.
Aye.
I don't think we need to vote.
Aye.
All right. Fine. Aye. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, that was number one. Number two, I want to follow up, put Mark shared out on the Disaster Preparedness Fair. The YMCA is hosting a free disaster preparedness fair for all residents on Saturday, the 11th, 9:00 AM to 12:30. The city team will be participating, and there'll be a variety of other partners, as Mark shared, including Eastside Fire and Rescue, King County, Red Cross, Petersland Energy,